We're going live with everybody? Yeah, we're going live here. Welcome, everybody, to Tuesday, June 10th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. The agenda tonight, we have the minutes of May 27th. We've got new business, a formal site plan review, Allison Moser, 119 Maple Lane, sketch plan review, Stacy Germain, Zero Burchwood Lane. And then we've got a couple of bookkeeping stuffs for us on the findings of fact and the conclusion of the law. So number one, I apologize for the seating here. There's municipal election going on next door, so normally we have more seating and at least a couple of these applications seem to have some public input that's coming, which happens infrequently, but I apologize for some of these people that have to stand up for a little bit. Why don't we start with the minutes of May 27th, please? Anyone had a chance to...
Everything looked good to me. I didn't see any changes. I'll take my own call.
Anybody? I'll take a motion then, please.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from May 27th meeting, May 27th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Second discussion, all is in favor? Okay, first...
Was there one other sort of minute still that you couldn't approve?
No, that's the findings.
The ones, okay.
That's the findings.
Okay.
All right. First order of business is a formal site plan review for Allison Moser, 119 Maple Lane, map 11 lot 27. I'm going to recuse myself from voting on anything to do with this application because that is my residence, so I think there's a huge conflict of interest on that. I would like a consensus of the board, though, that I can speak to any issue being addressed by this, or concerns of any neighbors, anything that I can speak. As I say, we just want to be transparent on everything, so consensus of the board, that's okay?
Also, we could...
Okay. George, I will give you that then. George is the vice chair, so have at it, George.
All right, well, I guess what we'll do, have Allison Moser come forward, who is the representative, to give us an overview of what we're considering tonight. Do you want to see it? There's only one chair there. Yeah, we can see that one.
We do want it up there. Thank you.
Actually, is there an empty chair next to you now? Can we slide that out? Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, give us a little overview for that.
All right, will do. I'll try to keep it short. I'm Mike Roy from CBMR Engineers. From the applicant, next up is Henry Barrett. We're here as part of a preliminary site plan review for 0.975 megawatt ground mounted solar project. As you said, it's located at 119 Maple Lane. The project itself will be located on a leased area on that parcel of approximately six acres. Existing parcel is undeveloped and located in the farm and forest districts. For access, there'll be a new 20-foot-wide gravel road that will transition to 15 feet as it gets a little further into the property. That road will be designed for WB67 access, so it's a large truck, fire truck, anything can get in there. There will be a turnaround at the end, and after construction, we anticipate very minimal traffic quarterly, monthly, just for routine maintenance. For security, the project will be enclosed in an eight-foot-high fence. There will be a six-inch wildlife gap at the base. The fence does include vehicle and man gates, and typically, Mexamp provides a NOX box for emergency access on that, on one of the vehicle gates, but we're happy to work with whatever the fire chief wants. For buffering, we do intend to maintain a natural buffer as best we can. The project, as you can see, is located between Maple Lane and a resource that was mapped, so we're going to try to maintain natural buffering. It is below Maple Lane, so there is some visual relief because of the elevation. We do not anticipate any noise pollution generated from the project. Albert Frick Associates did perform a wetland reconnaissance of the site, and as you can see, he did map a stream with some associated wetlands. We do not anticipate impacting any of the wetlands toward the stream. There will be a formal wetland delineation completed, and we also intend to submit project review letters to the main natural areas program, the main Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, and main historical preservation commission. For permitting beyond the town level, we anticipate a stormwater current by rule, DEP solar decommissioning application, and a main construction general permit notice of intent. That can be filed right before construction. We did receive and we appreciate the third-party review comments. The goal of our preliminary submission was to receive that preliminary feedback as well as present the project to the board with a chance to ask questions, receive any feedback. We plan to address those and submit a comprehensive application back that will address any questions and the items noted in the third-party review comment. This includes a formal boundary survey and the wetland delineation. The project is somewhat constrained by timeline, by state and federal rules, so that's why we want to make the next submission as comprehensive as possible with the ultimate goal of trying to shorten permit timeline and working with the town as best we can. But thank you for your time. We're happy to address any questions.
You've got a few people on the board, chances of anyone who has questions, give us a second or two. And maybe what we could do, you said there would be a formal survey coming?
Yes, correct. Yes, we'll complete a formal survey, yes.
Maybe we should just have you see more... No, did you really? Yeah, what? Are you satisfied with the comments that were made from your...
Yeah, obviously, they've acknowledged they've got some more planned and more design work to do. I think first and foremost, we want to see what's happening with the road going in, and then either through the fire chief or through the board, understand what the access would be around for maintenance around the solar farm itself. And then I think the biggest thing is obviously the survey, because there's a request in it to reduce, I think, one of the setbacks from 75 to 50. Yeah, yeah. So that will require a formal written waiver?
Yep.
Just don't know if you can point out, is that a rear line or a sideline? Because I think we can only do it from the rear, so that might be...
I'll have to revisit that.
Okay, just you're aware of it.
Yep, okay. Yeah, we do plan, formal engineering plans to...
Perfect. And then whatever copy or whatever reference you have for your stormwater PBR, we just ask that that's placed on the plan along with all your previous calculations of the contract of property.
Absolutely, yep.
No problems. I mean, if they're aware of everything, you know, and they're planning on responding to those, then I don't think we have any other comments at this time.
Okay.
We did get something from the bar chief saying he had an issue with it as proposed.
You do have one of your...
Yeah, we got it after that.
After we put the packets together, we got it back, so...
I know that was in the... Any other concerns you have? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak?
No, I'd like to speak about this. While you're going through, doing your full engineering survey and so forth and so on, just clean up the application itself. There are some issues in here. Your summary of the project describes it as a 46.5 acre, 46.2 acre property. That's incorrect. You also mentioned, under our code, it's a large-scale solar array system. It's not, it's a medium size.
Okay.
There's stuff in here, I don't know if you were talking about to the actual solar farm itself or the setbacks, but the setbacks are... So, tab, tab one. It's talking about existing main structure, which is the house, not the array. It says road trench setback. These numbers are incorrect. I think what you pulled in here is the, what it has to be for a structure, because there is an existing primary structure on the property, is where we live.
Yep.
I just don't want anything coming back on me saying, geez, you treat these people different than anybody else, so just make sure everything in this attachment one of the application is correct.
Okay, absolutely.
On setbacks and so forth.
Yeah, on the next submission, the property area will be completed based on the boundary survey.
Okay. So I did notice, I don't remember where it was in there, it was, I think, dealing with Jim's comments on the wetland and the delineation on that, you were asking the board, do we feel it's necessary to have the full property survey? Or do you just want it surveyed around whatever? Where the wet... I mean, you definitely have to get the wetlands delineated.
Under that, under your site plan order to give the board the authority to either require a full boundary survey or a survey of the area in proximity to the development. In this case, where we need to know the property lines, I'm guessing they probably have to do the boundary surveys to tie it all down, just because we've got setbacks, they're close to some of the sidelines there. So it's up to the board, that authority is given to the board, not to us, the reviewers, whether you want a formal, full boundary or enough boundary information at the site where the array is located. Again, I think you have to do the whole thing to understand the pieces.
Yeah. Is this being leased from the owner, this section, or is it so? That would really need something like that to have some definition on it, because without that, I mean, it could get expanded without even, I guess, I don't know, whatever reason be, but we need to know what area is served with it.
Yeah.
I think the survey is reported myself, anyway.
We're fine with whatever the board determines. Our, I guess, our initial request would be to just stay on the east side of the stream. I don't think there's any intent to go west of the stream.
Again, as long as they can tie the property lines down, I think we're all fine with the plan, because we know they're not crossing that, seeing all those weapons associated with it.
Yeah, that works for us.
But is there some way to define that area, the way it's going to be on there? You're going to have it fenced, correct? But that, or is it that area...
Are you having a scribed lease, or are you just having a descriptive lease over that property?
There'll be a defined recorded leasing.
So I think, as long as we have that defined lease, the property line up suffice.
Right, I mean, as it stands right now, this is an application so that they can move forward. Nothing's been signed as we speak, and this, for lack of a better term, that red area there, we're just going to define where the panels are. We'll just follow that, the polygon, and the polygon has not been defined to our satisfaction, and once it is, we will go through and, you know, sign the lease, but that's when everything...
Yeah, we just need that polygon tied to an external property line, so...
Yeah, yeah, okay. And you're saying the setback, you're, they were looking for a waiver down to 50 feet?
Yeah.
On the upland edge, or...
Not the stuff in the wetlands from the property line. Don't have it with me right this second, but I think...
Well, it's in my bag, in the back, but I mean, we'll confirm that.
Yeah, they can confirm that with the next plan, either way. I don't have a problem either way, just if they are requesting a waiver, it just needs to be in my...
And once again, a waiver to the stream and, not the waiver, but there can be a waiver to the stream if this polygon needs to ship.
Correct.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, as long as they need the setbacks from the stream and on, or the wetlands, you know, we don't require any waiver for the solar array for that.
Right, because it's not considered a structure.
The other question I have too, Jim, is because you mentioned any comments about you didn't feel that it was something where we could say the checklist was complete yet, or the submission checklist, or what's your thoughts on that at this point?
Well, I think tonight you're just giving them some feedback, and you need to do all that at the next meeting when you're prepared to go final. I think tonight it's more or less preliminary or pre-application kind of situation here where they're looking for feedback, so I wouldn't, so you'll do the checklist till you have...
Right, you don't really need to go through that.
Right, yeah. If they're comfortable with that, straighten that way off.
Yeah.
Does everyone on the board feel about table this for the next time?
Yeah, and one other thing, so I don't get accused of pushing something through. In your original thing going through the general review standards, so it would be 509.9, general review standards, subsection X, conformance with the comprehensive plan says the proposed solar array will adhere to town ordinance ordinance to the greatest possible extent possible, or to the greatest extent possible. It's going to need to conform, not to the greatest extent. So I mean, I would strike out those words, because those are lawyer weasel words.
Yep.
A lot of people don't like to say...
Yep, absolutely.
Because that's what we, and also on the last page of that, too, it's got the wrong date of the, I guess you guys were trying to come in on the 27th?
Basically, he was, yeah.
Okay, so that's why I just originally sent the 27th and serious. So that's all the stuff, and once again, you want to ask the audience, I don't know, a couple of neighbors are here.
Are there any others, or anyone here that would like to speak on the project?
Bear with me.
If you could stand up, please, and...
Just, just...
Yeah, just take a name, yeah.
Bear with me, this is, my name is Kathy Jezloski. I live at 82 Maple Lane, which is across the street from what's going on, and I am educated as a nurse, so this kind of falls out of my realm here, but nobody mentioned anything about the solar panels themselves and what they're made of, and I did go online and look, and it said that the panels are made of chemical material, arsenic and cadmium, and they can generate byproducts such as hexafluoride and sulfur and tetrfluoride, which is dangerous for the environment, humans, domestic and wild animals. And my son actually is going to be living right in front of this area, and his wife is pregnant with their first baby, and I wondered what the long-term side effects are of these solar panels 20 years from now. Is someone going to say, uh-oh, this was not good to do this? And my house, is the property going to go down because these things are that fair in the woods? And is there a cancer risk for us as well? And I know this sounds silly, but somebody did mention that it does make a little sound, a small humming sound, and every night, we love sitting on our front porch, listening to the frogs out in the field, in the ponds, and is this going to affect them as well? Thank you.
Would you care to address some of those questions?
Actually, the noise, there won't be any noise. There's a transformer and an inverter that are in the back there, you can see them. We'll provide detailed information on the noise and the distance from the property line, but there won't be any noise at the property line. We'll include that in the formal application. And then Henry can probably speak to what material the panels are made of.
Yeah, I would just also say on the noise, the main noise is from the fans and the inverter to cool the equipment, and that's only really running during the daytime when it's in operation. So at nighttime, there really is no noise at all. There's nothing being powered there, or nothing is on during the night. And in terms of the panels, I think there's the distinction in some panel technologies, and some of the older panels maybe did have some cadmium and other heavy metals. The panels we use, they're all made in the United States, and the primary components are silicon, glass, steel. They're all recyclable, so at the end of the project's life, they'll be sent to a facility for recycling. And so, you know, there's, there's really no risk or harm to humans due to the ingredients in those panels. Like I said, you know, the technology has come a long way, and so the panels they make now... now are very safe. There's no issues there and we haven't seen any. So I think I understand those, those concerns absolutely. But from what's in these panels, there shouldn't be any risks to, to humans.
And part of the process, just so I guess maybe answer this lady's question too, is you do come up with a disposal plan as well at, for the solar panels. So that's also part of this, this approval that we see that as well.
Correct, yeah.
I just wanted her to understand that.
Yep, there'll be a formal bond posted to the permission.
But then, you know, the process and when, and what, just off the record, I guess, what do you say the life cycle of something like those panels are typically? We don't really know yet.
Yeah, so the panels are actually under warranty for 30 or 35 years. The production will degrade a little bit each year over the life of that, but they should still be in operation after, you know, 30, 35 years. We expect them to last up to 40 years.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this from the audience? Is this strictly going to be a single phase? Are they going to try to put three phase on these panels eventually?
It'll be, it'll be three-phase power, so we'll, we'll connect to the three-phase that's running on, on Maple Lane.
So that'll take, that'll take special transformers to get the three-phase out?
Yeah, so, so the, the transformer and the inverter equipment that we have inside the fence line there, they'll convert the power to the three-phase that will be running into the site and then will connect to the CMP's distribution line on this, on the street.
So primarily it is three-phase and not single?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Anything else?
The only other thing I think might need a little more explanation because I still get confused on this. And to speak to the neighbors' issues here too, because their son, if you can see where the driveway is, you come south of that, that's where their son lives and then they live across the street from that. So I'm still confused where it shows the tree line and the tree fall line. So in Jim's comments, he keeps talking about a wooded buffer. But if it's my understanding or not about where the tree cut line is going to actually exist on that, that the tree cut line needs to be shown on this, not, not the shade line, not, and tree fall line means something different than tree cut line.
Absolutely.
It needs to be explained better that way because, once again, the boundaries between these have boundary trees and you know what the rules are with that about cutting and things of that nature and so forth, so.
Absolutely.
Which might allay some of the fears of distances and a wooded buffer versus a cleared buffer to the property line.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, that will, once we get a boundary survey, that'll all be locked down on the face of the earth.
Okay, so we'll have something similar to this with a multiple legend, a little bit clearer.
There'll be a full engineering set that'll show you what areas are being cleared.
Okay. Anybody else from the public before?
No other comments?
One more. And why did you pick an area in somebody's backyard? Why didn't you pick an area like out by roads or in the woods somewhere where nobody lives?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so it's a combination of three-phase power. So all these, these size projects, they require that type of power to connect to the grid. You know, a, a landowner that's interested in doing something like this, enough acreage to make a project like this work. So it's, it's just a variety of factors that go into identifying a useful property. And then it's also, you know, making sure that the landowners is interested in, in doing the project.
And I think in this case, it appears that, and I've just gone on a little information of scene, but it appears that for the most part, it won't be a view for neighbors or passing by, is that correct?
Right. Yeah, we've had pretty good luck with projects that are naturally buffered as opposed to ones right next to the road that are visible.
Right, visible, they're in your face kind of, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Entertainer motion then to?
Table. Take a motion to table the formal site plan review for Allison Mosher, 118 Maple Lane, map 11, lot 27.
Second. All those favor? Okay, I guess we're tabled and you're good to go to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And you said you're trying to look into expedite that as well, to just back, be back here.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I know there's still things you have to do.
Still some things work out, but yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yes. Stacy, is it Germaine?
Herman.
Herman, I apologize. Burchwood Lane, map 1, lot 12A.
Evening, members of the board. How are you? My name is Henry Hess, representing the applicant this evening, project managers, technicals. Pardon. My name is Henry Hess, I'm representing the applicant this evening. Stacy was also the landowner at the parcel located on the corner of Burchwood Lane and Main Street. The applicant's proposing self-storage in the Village Four district. It does apply a residential district to the rear there. The proposal is self-storage, approximately 11,000 square feet of building area. In chunks of about 14 to 3,600 square feet. They're proposing a gatehouse entry essentially to provide some sort of access to anybody who's taking care of the parcel, providing maintenance or otherwise. Power's anticipated to come off of Main Street poles there, be underground, to service any light electrical or any power that might be required until 80 et cetera. Water is intended to come off of Main Street as well, just for any requirements that they have. We don't have any bathrooms or any uses like that that are going to be proposed. We don't anticipate any sewer as well, just because we don't anticipate having bathrooms out there. The property itself or the project is proposing roughly about 60% of permanent area coverage of the 75% allowed in the Village Four district. We recognize that this use here of budding residential, we're certainly looking to hold some buffers around the expense of property, about 40 feet of high-skill buffers that will also include a screened fence within that buffer to help further screen the parcel. The parcel itself is abutting the Burchwood Lane subdivision. The parcel was at one point the land remaining when the subdivision was created. It's actually not formally a part of the Burchwood subdivision in that regard. We will be looking to submit formal application barring, sorry, after we move through the survey, that will be forthcoming. We've done some preliminary investigations on the site for wetlands or streams. We have found small pockets wetlands towards the rear on Oak Ridge Drive. And Oak Ridge Drive is well outside the development footprint. We don't intend for, we don't anticipate any wetland impacts as a part of that. We will be providing a stormwater permit to the Maine Department of Environmental Protection as this site will trigger a requirement to treat the stormwater to UMDE 500, chapter 500. We are proposing what will be approximately 4,000 square feet. Not all of that will be the basin, but we anticipate the areas and berm surrounding it to take about that much space for a, likely a detention area that includes a sand filter, or above-ground sand filter for, for drainage that will then outlet to a culvert nearby that goes under Burchwood Lane. Main Street's a busy street, we recognize there's a, there's a pretty good speed limit there, about 55 miles an hour, and actually it switches to 40 just beyond the site there. You're coming down the hill. Right now, the, the site's proposing access off of Main Street, about 65 feet before you get to a gate that would be accessed electronically. The intent being that any connection to Burchwood Lane would really be fire access, fire egress, anything like that, emergency egress, not necessarily full access. And that was what was submitted in the packet. We've also certainly opened to listening to the board and hearing some concerns around access around Main Street. Certainly the circulation would be a little safer if a vehicle could pull off of Main Street onto Burchwood Lane and then turn in to the site as opposed to having that as fire egress. And in working through this application, we've certainly, we wanted to try and keep the traffic off of Burchwood as best we could. We're holding an existing curb cut on Main Street that's there today, and that's part of the access plan is using that existing curb cut along Main Street. As such, we will need to provide a driveway opening permit with Department of Transportation, which we'll submit when we pull together the, the full application. But we did want to make sure we, we put this in front of the board and hear some feedback from the board before we took the next steps and continued survey and engineering here and pulled forward a formal application to continue the review. So with that, it certainly yields my time over the board with any comments, questions, concerns, and if Stacy would like to say anything, certainly.
Hi, my name is Stacy Germaine. My, my daughter lives here in Maine. My husband and I are hoping to, sorry, hello, Louis. My husband and I are hoping to establish a business in Maine and move closer to her and future grandchildren. We also have a second child who hopes to come to Maine as well. We plan on making this as aesthetically nice as a business can be. We are going to make the buildings emulate the area, be brown on the bottom, green on top. A hedge, probably a laurel hedge completely surrounding the property, probably a double hedge as well as the see-through or non-see-through gate or fencing. And just keep it clean, keep it nice, and as low impact as we can have in an area with, by also providing a good business.
With that, it certainly yields our time back to the board with any comments, questions that they may have.
I guess I'll start out just with a couple of things that I can't wrap my head around just real quick. So on the southernmost side, you've got a building that's 30 by 1, 30 feet by 1. You've got 24 feet on either side of that building to get vehicles around. So why doesn't the next building, which is north, I guess, north to west, that's the 20 by 130 building, why aren't you maintaining the 24 feet on both sides on that?
The 20 by, I'm sorry, which one, the 20 by?
The 20 by 130, your second building. You're maintaining a 20-foot radius around that.
Around there, or what, the Main Street side?
Yeah, on the Main Street side, you've got 20 and 24.
Yeah, part of that is we're trying to make sure we provide enough space for vehicular circulation. I, I think what we're trying to do is accommodate enough room up front for a truck that might have a small U-Haul or anything like that to pull off of Main Street. In doing so, we're, we're trying to get as tight as we can against those initial buildings. I think circulation wise, you enter through the gates and go down the center and you have to loop around the backside there, kind of taking a left and coming around to access the back. I don't think you'd ever take a direct left into the site through there. That's something we'd certainly make clear with any sort of circulation pattern to climate because that's a tight section.
Which obviously the fire chief's going to have to do his simulations on that for these vehicles. And it's the same thing with the next building going up there, the two, I guess it's going to be a 20-foot by 140, but it's a 10-foot split down the center by what I can understand on that. So you're not going to have any circulation coming in from the entrance, same thing, you're going to direct all, everything down that 25 and then looping around, and that's why you're doing that there.
Yeah, and that, that really is the, the goal, the parcel, trying to get as much space off of Main Street as we can. And we're, we've got about 65 feet from the edge of Main Street to the gate, which even feels tight, which is part of the reason we, we think we actually get a little bit safer access with Burchwood. You know, we'll certainly be providing some of the traffic information along that. It is a public road on, on Burchwood Lane there. We're looking to really provide some traffic information to show the low-impact use here and that it clearly wouldn't have an effect on Burchwood Lane. But right now, in terms of trying to actually provide something that does our best to not impact Burchwood Lane or the residents there, we're really looking at the access off of Main Street, until which time we, you know, we come forward and really realize that if there's a safety concern off Main Street, given the speeds on Main Street and trucks either turning, needing to turn around, if somebody pulls in and needs to back out somehow, maybe their key card doesn't work, we've got to provide space to turn around there on Main Street. But I, I do think Burchwood certainly provides a safer alternative for access.
Yeah, because, I mean, going south, basically, you've got two lanes, so, I mean, you can tuck off just like any, any center, it's not a center-turning lane, but you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Obviously, the fire chief's going to have to look at that. The only other thing I want to mention here is, once again, this is just a quick sketch, plan is plowing. You need to know where you're going to store all your snow.
Sure.
And by the way, these are set up, if you're going to try to maintain hedges and so forth, we're going to need to know the areas where you're going to be pushing snow and storing snow and in it. And everything, it seems like what's going to happen here is either going to be pushed to the back or to the 26 side, and if you're going to end up with a lot of snow on this side, you're going to need to do something with a detention pond on the, the Main Street side. I mean, obviously, if this 4,000 square foot one is going to be sized, it might be sized for collecting, you know, rainwater and things of that nature, but you know, once again, we're dealing with the snow and all the other stuff.
Yeah, but certainly, you can, what we can do is when we, when we pull together our plan there, that from the survey boundary, total, we'll include snow storage areas.
And would that show where this, elevations of where this is going to drain to, I don't...
Right, right now, the site, the high side is on the south and it flows to the north towards Burchwood Lane, with the low spot being right in that northeast corner of the lot, actually a culvert on the parcel area that was under Burchwood.
And where does that end up?
That goes underneath Burchwood and then continues down.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because I don't have a map of other, the other. So it's going to come in here, so it's going to end up on lots within Burchwood. Or does that keep continuing down to the, the corner of 121 and 26, where the trucking station is and all that stuff?
Yeah, it continues actually north, back behind some of the lots there, there's an existing drainage pattern there. It would certainly treat and make sure we're not increasing.
And make sure that it's going to handle, because we know we've had 10 or 11 weekends of rain, which, and a couple ones that were two and a half inches of rain. And this site is, like you said, anybody that's here knows, you're at Chaker Hill, everything comes off the hill, so.
Yeah, and that's as part of what's going to be required, just with a DEP permit for stormwater on this, we'll be meeting chapter 500 and of course, requirements of Town Hallon's permit.
One question I got.
Those are the questions I have.
One question I have. Everybody up in Burchwood Drive, they're all on, they all got drill wells up there. They're not on town water. The town water runs up the hill with its cast off, that's it, didn't go any further. Now, how many feet is your access curb cut going to be from Burchwood Lane?
The, from the Main Street down Burchwood, you mean, or where is the access?
Is it going to be further up the hill where you're going to do the curb cut?
Yep, there's an existing curb cut on Main Street that we're looking to use, that's actually where it's shown on the site plan. That's an existing curb cut on Main Street.
Yeah, because some, some of the other projects that have happened on, on that corridor, 26, with curb cuts there, the state has been real tough on curb cuts. And I don't know, and if you have to try to use Burchwood Lane as an access, is the association going to allow that traffic where they have to maintain that road?
Scott, can you chime in here? I believe that's Burchwood Lane there is a public road.
It is.
So that, that would be maintained, I believe, by the town.
I didn't know the town plowed that.
But I'm not sure.
As far as, as far as I know, that's been in an association.
As it is.
Unless something's changed that I don't know about.
Well, that's a great question, James.
That's something I'll have to find out.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Ken. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Count.
This existing curb cut exists here. If you look now, if you go south down the gray, there's like a weird metal fence with wooden spoke tires. So I guess my other question is, I asked Scott early coming in, because this was all one piece of land at one point, and it was split into a subdivision. I don't remember what the year is, but...
Eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven, okay. So we've got a plan, we've got a plan book recorded at the registry of deeds, or I believe nine or ten of them associated with the original subdivision. And then at some other point, some of this other stuff got added in here without anything else being recorded. I don't know how, how it came through here, well before my time. But, so it seems like the remaining land was not under the same restrictions as everything else, correct?
That is correct. So the remaining land, as it states in the exhibit A of the original subdivision or some of the deeds, the subdivision areas, with respect to the remaining land, approximately eighteen point three-three acres of the land obtained was in said deed of M.H. Sand and Gravel Products Inc., in which eighteen and thirty-three hundredths of an acre, acres is not a portion of the plan of Birchwood Estates. This grantor states that she has no intention of developing this remaining land within the next five years. That's certainly only when it's been five years.
Correct, but also, there were a lot of restrictions on the lots that were sold, that they had to be log home, they had to be this, they had to be that. Somehow, and for the life of me, I don't know how remaining land does not go with part of the subdivision because it's the same part of the same mother parcel. But whether that's here or there, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying, the original plat that's recorded had nine or ten houses. This remaining eighteen point eight acres of land, now it's down to eight point one acres, which is represented by this two squares connected by a little spaghetti square. So there were five other lots that were sold off at some point to get you down to eight acres from the eighteen acres. And every one of those were subject to the covenants and restrictions, just like everybody else was. But this was still remaining by MB at that point?
The M.H. Sand and Gravel?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, M.H. Sand and Gravel. Right, so they're the ones, whether or not it's that, or however you pronounce the name "Hull," that determine the restrictions, correct?
Yeah, "Hull," yeah. I believe that that part of the deed is also a point at which, when that land was remaining, "Hull" held on to that plan and actually essentially said, "We are not a part of that subdivision." If somebody were to purchase land and incorporate the subdivision, I believe that land would be certainly under restriction.
Well, I don't believe so, because the restrictions, it says that they have the right not to, the intent was not to have everybody under the same restriction. The owner had the right to determine. It was just the original ex amount of lots. And it actually didn't even matter on that, because we're gonna throw and spell out each individual lot, wasn't held to the same standard, but I guess they did at whatever point to make it a log home community. But back to my original point, I don't care what a deed says, if it's part of the mother parcel, it's part of the subdivision. So that's main state law, it's just no way around that. Not that it matters now because these other lots were developed. I mean, I just don't understand why this is not, we don't have to look at this as a revision to a subdivision, because this was a subdivision, the remaining land thereof is still part of the mother parcel, it's still part of the overall parcel. So just by them saying that they retain the land, it's not part of the subdivision. If they wanted to sell off house lots in there, it damn well would've been part of the subdivision, they would have gone back through subdivision, in a subdivision review. So, and I'd asked our code officer, and there's nothing in here about Oak Ridge ever being developed, which it should've been part of a revision to a subdivision plan and so forth, and thank you, and that's that. So if you look at that cul-de-sac at the end, the remaining, the four parcels at the end were not part of the subdivision, that weird landlocked piece wasn't part of the subdivision.
Essentially, that...
So, yeah, that back area all the way down through and back out. So it's just the ones with the, whatever you wanna call them, the little icons there. So there was a large piece of that eighteen point whatever acres of land was not conveyed. The original subdivision was just the lots going down Birchwood. So, I don't know if we have to look at this under a subdivision.
Amendment.
Amendment, I mean, it's...
It's a question.
I think it's actually a question for a title attorney to give you a opinion on it, because that's certainly where it is, part of the subdivision, it does, was, I mean, like you said, the mother parcel, and if they were to develop just individual house lots there, it would be considered part of that subdivision still. So even though they, the, of it dropped as far as those expansion of it, that, neither here nor there, that was, somebody dropped that before my time on the board, and that's gonna lock down. It's suddenly something that got slipped past the town, I don't know if that happened. But that is, like you said, I mean, that's real estate lawyers, that mother parcel was part of that, the original parcel that was determined that split up, that made the subdivision.
Which I don't think is a major thing, because, I mean, this is a sketch plan going into a site plan. So it's either gonna be a site plan or it's gonna be a site plan with an amendment to the subdivision, which, and I'm not asking you to correct the sins of everybody else that did things in the past, but I think it's gonna have to be a modified subdivision, and at least even not your part showing all this additional things on a new recorded plat at the registry, these additional lots and everything that weren't part of the subdivision.
You know, that's something we'll certainly have to have the, to your point, title on the attorney, look at and make sure that when we're looking at this land, looking at this lot, that distinctly there is or isn't part of it, to your point, looking at the main state law. I think that's something we'd like to bring forward, at least to the board, or at least the code officer here, with some feedback on prior to our next meeting, so we can all go forward in the same direction on that.
Well, I don't think the code officer has the authority to accept that, they've just gotta come back before the board because it's subdivision, just like site plan, you can't just approve this as a site plan, so.
No, I guess my intent was not that we would just have to work with code enforcement on that, but at least send it to review anything that we do from the title attorney before we come back. I wouldn't wanna come back and have an open discussion about it, I'd rather have it kind of settled, talk, make sure it's reviewed by the town first, and then send something, application here that actually consented for the report. Great point, Jim.
I guess my last question is, that landlocked piece that's in the back, that weird trapezoidal piece, that's owned by one of the four people on Birchwood?
No, it's owned by Danny, Muriel's son, strip in the back.
Yeah.
It's a one-acre lot back there.
Does it not have street, uh, frontage?
No.
It did.
It's dead, landmarked. Correct, yeah.
I guess that's basically my question, so I mean, upon this, everybody else can bring up their stuff, so at least the applicant can address anything else that...
A couple of major things, I think.
A curb cut, and this water flow on it here has got to be addressed.
That's a point you brought up, that there is, and I, I wasn't thinking of that, but that is quite a drop in elevation from one side.
Yeah, so where's it flowing?
Where's it go, right? And...
Down our driveways, that's where it goes.
Just across the way, there's a second lot.
Not me, just my neighbors. I live at the other end.
Anybody else from the board have any?
I wasn't on the board, but I've lived there long enough so I can remember that, when that whole thing got developed, and originally it was an association, and I believe, I believe the "Hulls" are the ones that started the whole thing. And they sold those lots off, and it was supposed to be a log home village. That's the way I explain it. And I know some people that live up there, my neighbor's daughter lives up there, and she called me and I, because she was a little concerned about what's happening up there. And like Jim said, you really, you really can't go back if a subdivision was created there. We still have to follow the rules of what was developed back then. Until that's resolved, I don't, I don't really know how we can move forward on this stuff.
Yeah, that's, I understand that. Can I offer that, as part of the process, you know, it sounds like we're trying to nail down, making sure that we come in either as, whether it's just site plan or site plan and subdivision amendment, correct? Not necessarily whether the use would be allowed through the village or district.
Oh, it's allowed.
Yeah.
It's allowed in the zone.
Right.
Now, whether or not somebody wants to read the deed a different way, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but the way I read it, just, so the remaining land doesn't have to follow the same restrictions as everything else, which to me seems kind of asinine, but that's what the people set up at that point. I guess my last question, which I keep saying is my last question, is, is part of this is the neighbors, I'm sure everybody's concerned about this. Not only what's going on here for the storage, but you still have, you're talking about eight acres, I'm gonna assume, just from doing some scaling in my eyes, at three-point something acres is up front and well over five acres in this back area. What potential uses are looked at there in the future? I mean, not to stop anybody that owns land from creating a couple house lots, I don't know if that would be allowed. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, so, I mean, they're maxed out, right? Can any other house lots be created there, some dead end road? There fourteen in there, am I counting them wrong?
I think there is fourteen in there.
So I guess that would mitigate the fact that any other houses couldn't be put back there.
Is that why you kept that curb cut, you think, if you would plan it, I mean, I'm just saying that's a...
That curb cut was for this first house back here. That was their original driveway, they didn't have a driveway at Birchwood.
Right, okay, so that's the original, but I'm just saying, that's why you retained that remaining land, maybe, I don't know.
I do believe there's still a right way to this house back there in the deed.
That would be the...
Can you verify the fourteen off the private road?
You can't have more than fourteen dwelling units, duplex houses too. You can't have more than fourteen units on a dead end road.
Any dead end.
And any dead end road, any town, without a second. So basically, any dead end road, you're limited to fourteen.
Any newly created dead end road, if it was in the road, because we've got camp roads that have got more than fifteen houses, but I'm just saying, newly created...
Anything that precedes the adoption of the code, which was seventy, whatever, is limited, this was in eighty, whatever, when this was developed, so unless you find another access out through pipe or something, whatever, then it's limited to the amount of structures, for the amount of dwelling units on structures.
Does that really limit your development potential on the back end there?
Correct, and that's why I wanted to make sure, because I'm sure neighbors were looking at that, saying, well...
Is that saying we could not develop it as a single home?
Correct. Not without another access.
Because right now, the access is off of Maine?
No.
For that back area?
This is off of Birch.
You have frontage on Birch as well, so...
To that back area.
Correct. Now, once again, we're not supposed to tell you how to do everything and act as your agent or whatever, but there's a way around that, I'm sure you can see. If you need two access points, I'm sure you can see there's an access point that could be utilized, but that, if you're gonna do that in the future, you're gonna have to do that in your stormwater calculation, in your phosphorus, all this other stuff to get there, because you're gonna access it through a different point. And then that is gonna determine a lot of other issues that could, things could happen. But it just, if that was a possibility, it seems like you would deal with your agent and look at the worst-case scenario, what you wanna do, so everything's being done at once, so you're not paying. To have the same thing done two or three different times, instead of having each individual time you wanted to develop it.
That's a great view, Jim.
And once again, if that was the case, hammerheads, turnerhead, cul-de-sac, you know, I mean, the whole road standard to chapter eight.
Yeah, like Jim says, you put another access road in, you've gotta deal with the stormwater, and it can get costly.
We should open it up to the...
Well, once we're done with everybody here, yeah.
He's just repeating what he's saying.
I'll open it. Yeah. All right. Anybody else from the board have any questions, concerns?
So we don't know if Birchwood is a public road?
The lot says it's a public road.
It's a public road. Oak Ridge is not.
Oak Ridge is not.
You people live up in there, does the town plow that road now?
Yeah.
No, I didn't know they accepted it. That's the answer, I think.
Right, but they're saying Oak Ridge is...
Right.
All right, so, nobody from the board here, we have a full house, so anybody wants to go, just raise your hand, mention who you are, the mics will pick you up and...
Okay, sure.
David Ford, I live on Birchwood Lane, have the ten years. Couple of things about the entry point off of Birchwood. You've got a school bus stop right there on twenty-six. That's gonna create a safety issue for kids.
Yeah.
Big safety issue. Based on the drawings, it's pretty close, but that's one issue I have with this. The other issue is, Jim, I'm in real estate, I agree with what the board has said, if you're gonna amend the Birchwood Estates agreement, then you've gotta abide by what I signed on with the deed conveniences. I'm not an attorney, I've got deed conveniences that I signed on to for my house, and it has to be a certain size, et cetera, et cetera. I have it in hand if you'd like to see it.
No, I mean, I've seen it because of...
It's been recorded, true?
Yeah, it's recorded, but it says, this is just somebody, I'm not even gonna mention the name, it's lot eight of the original subdivision of Birchwood.
Okay.
I, by imposing these restrictions, the grantor does not commit herself to impose similar restrictions in the deeds of other persons purchasing lots on this plan, whether or not the same are located near the lot hereby conveyed. So it's basically saying, she has the right, whoever bought these lots agreed to these restrictions.
Correct.
But it specifically says, by imposing these restrictions, the grantor...
Yeah.
...does not commit herself to impose similar restrictions on anybody else.
Isaiah, okay.
So, once again, I'm not an attorney, I don't even play a real estate agent.
Right.
But this is pretty black and white to me, and it makes no sense, because if you're trying to protect the value...
Exactly.
...of a development, you wanna do, they gotta be twenty-five hundred square foot homes with garages and breezeways, you don't wanna be, you know, you wanna protect what's going in there, and I know a couple of these lots came up for sale a while ago, because we looked at purchasing some stuff, and it was always marketed as a log home community.
Exactly.
Which, unfortunately, that to me doesn't say it is.
Right.
So, but, you know, once again, it's up to anybody that, if this gets approved in its way, that if you're an agreed party, it would be a civil issue and so forth. But we're just trying to look at this and try to figure out what the applicant's trying to do.
Correct.
And how it can be cited in a way to, you know, work within a zone that it's an allowed use of.
Yeah, I agree.
But thank you for bringing up the school bus thing, that's a very important thing. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Maggie Thornton, and I live at seventeen Birchwood Lane with my husband and my two daughters, a seventeen and nineteen-year-old. Before I get into kind of the obvious reasons why this is not a good idea, I would like to talk directly to the, to you who's looking to buy the land. As a mom of two teenage daughters who access Birchwood Lane all day long, taking their dogs for walks, going for runs, visiting their friends, trick-or-treating, walking their little friends, my nineteen-year-old walking the five-year-old from... walking their little friends, my nineteen year old walking the five year old from the bus stop, it, it is scary to say the least that a storage unit, despite lovely bushes and a nice brown overlay, would be literally across the street from my house. Makes me sad to say the least. I have lived there for twenty years. These are my family, they're my, we have block parties, we have dog walking events, we have people hosting Christmas nights. This is not just like a random street where people don't know each other, this is some, we, we have known each other for a very long time, so this is it's near and dear to my heart, and I'm, like, a storage unit is such an eyesore and very, very dangerous to have strangers coming into our home, and it is our home. I also believe there'll be negative impact on our property values, I'm not sure why anybody would ever wanna buy a house next to a storage unit. I am very concerned about traffic, traffic and safety concerns, I'm worried that in a perfect world, there would be an entrance on Birchwood Lane. I live right on the end of Birchwood Lane, so this is, um, this would have a huge impact on my family. The increased noise and emission would be hazardous, the congestion that it would have. I've been to storage units, and as much as you wanna say that's gonna be a nice clientele, we don't know who the clientele is by any means. Noise and light, light pollution, is this area now gonna have lights above it? So now, instead of looking up in the sky and seeing a beautiful night, I see storage unit lights to make sure that nobody's robbing the storage units. This could be setting a dangerous precedent, where people think that they can come and build on Birchwood Lane. And I also, I just think in conclusion, just because that one parcel doesn't have to follow the rules, doesn't morally sit well with me that you would choose to not do what the other eighteen, nineteen people on that street have done. We all have log cabins, so that is a, that's a real thing, when we did our addition, we did log cabins on it. It, it's a, it's a peaceful log cabin community, and they're a storage place, a storage unit does not belong anywhere on our street. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, gentlemen, on your way back?
Um, Alexander Sammoren, we live at fifty-five Birchwood Lane. Aside to some of the other great points that have been made, I just wanna note that because of the actual grade of this piece of property, I've looked at it personally while it was for sale, to do something residential. But with their current site plan that's listed, because of this grade and the stormwater effect, how it's actually going to play, is this stormwater, regardless if it's filtered through a sand basin or not, is going to follow the south side of Birchwood Lane, and is going to affect one driveway, Oak Ridge Road, then it's going to pool in front of the house that already currently has a a pool there, that, that actually had to raise their property, and has water in their basement constantly because of the grade of this, the slope of the land, and then it's gonna travel under Birchwood Lane, in between two other houses. So you mentioned the well impact, you're looking at like five houses directly gonna flow through their property, unless you can divert the water onto twenty-six, which is impossible, because the, the grade doesn't, doesn't flow that way, it wouldn't make sense. And then I also wanna note, despite the picture that was put on the site, the site plan, the, the houses are conveniently like shaded out, there's, outside of this development, two other residences, one to the direct south off twenty-six, which is very close to the property line. And then there's another one to the north side of Birchwood Lane, which currently has a beautiful cleaned up buffer that he just cleaned up, it's a new owner. They've done a very nice job, so they're gonna be directly looking at it, and there's one, I guess it would be to the west, which has a nice buffer from twenty-six, that's going to lose all of that as well. You can do a lot of landscaping, but I agree with the lights and everything else, it's gonna impose quite a problem to the neighborhood when it comes to that, despite the stormwater. I also wanna note, to the school bus thing, there's eleven children on that road. Someone up and coming, not riding the bus, our kids ride the bus, they're there every morning. I'm not saying there's gonna be a lot of traffic in and out every minute of the day, but to use Birchwood Lane for this is going to be a huge safety threat. And then to slow a vehicle down off twenty-six with a sixty foot buffer to the gate is gonna be next to impossible, at fifty-five miles an hour, especially with a trailer, you've all, if they don't know the area, I'm guessing they're not residents, so they don't know to slow up, they're looking for the address. It's, it's quite an issue.
And they're gonna come down to the bottom of our cul-de-sac where our property is, and there's a nice little turnaround, and there's folks that do come down there. We graciously did have a sign put up, when we had one of our newer neighbors that kinda came in, but fifteen years we've been there with two small children, eleven children on that street, from younger than what you see here tonight, and it's just, there's basketball being played down there. They, these children use this cul-de-sac area and to have potentially, well, there's strangers, folks come down, you know, that poses a really, we moved there for a reason, it's private, it's safe feeling, and that's what we want for our children.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, my name's Tammy Frann, I live at ninety-eight Main Street, the house most impacted by this. We're gonna be looking at them, right, the, the buildings are not gonna be more than fifty or sixty feet from my bedroom window. And I have a memory garden from my mom, which is gonna be adjacent to this, and my dad, we, we built this reason again. We lived here forty years ago, before it was a two lane highway, before they put the rubble strips, all the safety has been done, it's all great that you put the safety in, and we're happy that you did that, but it's not working. I'm a runner, I run on twenty-six, you guys probably all know me for that. It's, I take my life in my hand, every single day when I run there, there's no way they're gonna be able to stop. We are the driveway right before that, they're gonna turn around in our driveway, we're gonna have to put a gate up, if we have to. There's no way, they go, they put those signs up that tell you the, the speed when they're going through, it's sixty or seventy miles an hour in a forty mile an hour zone. And when I'm running, I'll stand in, I'll run there, I'll look at the sign, and then I'll give them the dirtiest look that I can give. It doesn't help, it doesn't do a darn thing, and, and I'm sorry, but people's speed, and they're not gonna slow down. And if someone even thought about backing if the gate locked and they started to back up, we're talking about death here. On that note, there's been two really significant, really bad accidents, like the corner of Birchwood. One of them, I thought was dead. I ran down, we were out painting, I ran down, I thought, God, she was dead, she should've, she wasn't, thank God. Another one was a car tried to go up the hill and pass somebody because he was a little impatient, literally took the two sides of his car off and left the middle. It's not a safe road, it's not, this is just not a good way to put for either one, to have them to turn in there, it's just, it's not a good use of the land, I'm sorry. And it's gonna impact, like I said, impact us the votes, we're gonna be looking at this thing no matter how you make it blend in or whatever. And the, the amount of people that are gonna be down there, yes, it might be limited, but you're still gonna have people who don't know the area. Who's to say they're gonna turn into our driveway? We have a very large house, it looks like something that might be commercial. And we've had people do it before, we actually had a guy during a snowstorm park in our parking lot, because he thought it was a commercial building, because of the way it's laid out. And that's what we're gonna end up facing, is we're gonna be seeing a lot of those people in our yard. And then, no matter what fence you put up, I'm still gonna be looking at this right here, our houses with the inch right there, and and the other thing I have to ask is, that little parcel of land that goes between the small lot and the large lot, that borders our property too. So if someone's thinking of putting a driveway or putting an access road through there, that's a huge impact, and then there's a house behind us, kind of, because it's too big to go back, that would go right, right at them. I don't know how you can make that work. The bus stop was something I thought of too. Every day, we sit in our house and we hear the screeching of the brakes, because the school buses stopped. And I, I, people, I realize people, it's, it's them speeding, but that's, somebody's gotta get hurt really bad.
Can we all listen?
Right, well, hang on, sorry, I'm generally, I'm nervous about it too. The, the noise, people are gonna be talking, yelling, the lights, that's another whole issue. Parking area, if you're gonna be any type of parking area, you're gonna have more cars than are gonna be able to go around that circle, what if someone stops and they're working in their building? You know, it's not, you know, it's literally like packed in here the way that it's got set up. So, that's my-
Okay, thank you.
I can answer your question about the grade. So, when Route twenty-six project was started, there was already concerns on how the drainages have come through on top by Shaker Hill coming, going northly. And we had the, the big cheeses out there, DOT, they came out and they looked at those situations, they put a special calvert in for us.
Two, two calverts, one on the other side, I got it.
Of, of twenty-six, and then on, on the, on their property, which is set aside, gives us a grade to that calvert. Now, right to the right, if you're looking at twenty-six, this is twenty-six right here, and we're, we're situated in such a way that all the groundwater, sewage, oh, not sewage, but groundwater runs right to that area, and unless they make that, I mean, I don't know how, how are they gonna change it, because it's gonna change the, the water direction to the point where we're gonna have up lake or upon. And we already spent a lot of money in all this process, moving the twenty-six project, because they recognized that it was an issue, so we, all this stuff got done, and now it's gonna probably change again, so someone, someone from the DOT's gotta come and look at this. Because of the, with how the water flow is going. And the other thing is the, the speed limit, I mean, this is not your district, I guess, it's the state of Maine, but the speed limit is fifty-five on top of Shaker, it goes down forty, just maybe fifteen, ten to fifteen feet from, yeah, from, from the car, Wayne Carley, it goes down to forty. And then there's another one, another spa, spa, speed limit, I believe on, on the property that they're, that they're located on. So there, this, it's a, it's really a very high relative speed, I mean, forty doesn't, but people are not doing forty. They're, they're doing faster than that. I mean, they put up the radar, and they really, they're slowing people down for a while, but that's it, doesn't solve it. There's no problem, the only way they can solve all this problem is, speed limit needs to be changed further up, maybe going up the hill, and they're gonna, they're gonna talk about putting up business. I mean, what do you guys, what'd they do with, with twenty-six, I'm afraid, when they have all this contract, when businesses going on? You guys slow down, we had, you know, speed, speed limit slowed down, so I don't wanna go on and on and on, but this, if you were to put a home in, I don't think you would have, no one would probably say anything. But if you put in a business, then it's depreciating our homes. And it's, and then you could really, we go on and on and on. And I don't know if this is hitting home, your home at all, but I mean, it's, it's really gonna cause a lot of problem for the whole community in that area uptown.
Well, and we're retired, and part of our retirement was, when we sell our house, we're gonna use that money, and now you've taken some of that money, or you will be taking a good point between ten and thirty-five percent of that, because of the depreciation.
All I can say is getting back to the lighting and the stormwater, the runoff, all that. Typically, the group that's presenting this would represent us as our third party reviewer, just like Jim Seymour did with the solar farm. We'll have to go out and pick a different reviewing group, because they can't be the presenter and the reviewer of the project, so a lot of these issues that you're bringing up will be addressed very seriously, especially stormwater runoff, it's gonna be huge. Especially if it's gonna affect anything in the DOT corridor. That's not just, this is bringing the monkey mucks in from Scarborough, running over all this stuff again, and so forth. This is, isn't a redevelopment of twenty-six, it's gonna be something dealing with all those issues. As far as lighting goes, it's full cutoff lighting, any business in town that presents, it's cutoff lighting, the lighting can't. You'll be able to see that there's a light there, but the light's not gonna be shining off the property, it's all shining downward. And they'll have to present a lighting plan for this, which will which will show exactly how much is leaving the property, at what levels and so forth. Those are two of the main things, and obviously the school bus stuff, because the school, any site plan application and subdivision, the sheriff sees it, the fire chief sees it, the school sees it. The school's gonna pick this up as a major issue of being a bus stop with eleven kids getting on and on off the bus. Route twenty-six was supposed to be slowed down, Route twenty-six was built as a superhighway from the state of Maine, ever since they put the twenty-six A connector in, they wanted to get people off the turnpike to Bethel as quick as they could.
Yeah.
Now we have lights down five corners, we've got lights here, we're seeing slowdown reductions in the speed.
But it's not working.
But, once again, I'm just saying, they're trying to address it, and this will be another thing, because once again, the distance, the sightlines from here are gonna be determined how far the sightlines have to be on the speed limit there, I'm assuming your sightline's gonna be fine, because that's a pretty
Pretty straight.
Straight piece of road, but still doesn't address the issue, and I'll have to admit, I'm, I'm an offender. I mean, I drive to Southern Maine all the time, and by the hill, by the time I hit Shaker Hill Nursery, you let off on stuff, and as you come down, do I hit the brakes to be going to speed limit, or do I just take my foot off the accelerator and slow down as I'm coming through? I'll admit it, so I'm sure everybody here will admit, I know John won't, because he goes up North Rainin Road, so he's got a different issue. But, we do hear you on that, because there's a major thing on Route eleven as well, over by the Casco Line, where you come around a blind corner, that they had to install a light there, because of the school bus stop, and I think it was a daycare. So, some of this could be, if, if this proceeds and goes to whatever, it could, you know, force different signage, flashing lights, whatever, there could be a solution to it on that aspect, I'm not saying they will, but just, I, I do hear what you're saying.
It still doesn't address the being out by bedroom window.
Yeah, we really wanted to say before, I said, that's what we're gonna see, because how high those trees are, I mean, unless they're gonna be twenty, thirty feet high, and that should be like instantaneously, not over thirty years.
It has to be year round too, not just, it's like, we don't even see our neighbors in the summer, but we see them all winter, so it's gotta be year round that it's blocked.
The, uh, before they put that traffic light in, I had talked to the sheriff there. They had clocked people on both directions at eighty-five miles an hour down through there.
Well, the fact of the matter is, we have, we have full time policing now, Jim, so we can address that as well. Anybody else would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yes, Eric Daggett, twenty-two Birchwood Lane, this is my backyard, essentially. I think these folks, nice folks, hit on everything, it is a family community, I have two children, seventeen and thirteen. My daughter likes to go outside, maybe sunbathe, maybe there'd be a storage unit right there, where people can look, it's hard for me to imagine you're gonna be able to shield this completely from my backyard, it's literally my backyard. And I would just appeal to, you know, being a human, right? Clearly you can see the families in here, we all care about one another, we all care about our community, and we just ask you to reconsider what you're doing here. If you wanna build a property, you wanna build a log home, it's unsettling to me that there's somehow, there was some loophole along the way that where this thing came off of the whole, you know, the whole, you gotta build a log home, you gotta build something that's, that, that makes sense for the community. I'm gonna get an attorney and fight this to the best of my ability, but I would just ask you to reconsider.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Jessica Taylor, I live at fifty-eight Birchwood Lane with my husband Brian, and we have two daughters who are seventeen and fourteen, and we've lived there for seventeen years. I just wanna clarify, is it self-storage or boat storage? Because it's called both things, depending on what you look at in the paperwork.
Yeah, I can clarify that for you. The goalie of the property is to be a self-storage unit. We've certainly talked, the applicants certainly talked about the idea, and when they're constructing it, if they only do, you know, a phased approach, that in the interim between filling out the last units, they might allow some boat storage there. Be intended to be built without, as a self-storage.
So that means more traffic than if there were only boat storage, which would make it less traffic, because you have to have a bigger space for a boat than you do for if you're moving. So I'm really concerned about the traffic, like everybody else, when we are headed north and arriving to our home, it's nerve wracking, because there's not a lot of shoulder, you don't have a turning lane, people are right up on you, and to Tammy's point about with the school buses, and you hear the screeching of the brakes, and school buses have big red flashing lights, and you have to stop for them. So if somebody's got a boat on a trailer, like somebody else mentioned, and doesn't know where they're going, and has to take a hard ninety degree right into a small space off of Main Street, we only have sixty feet where there's a gate that's blocked, then that, that's not a lot of room, and then, you know, so that, like Tammy said, that could cause deaths. And the address, depending on what you look at on the paperwork, it's either zero Birchwood Lane or twenty-five Birchwood Lane, the address is Birchwood Lane. So people, we- So people, we put our addresses of the business we wanna go to into our GPS, they're gonna come onto Birchwood Lane, that's how they're gonna get in to there. That's where they think, they will think the entrance is. And, again, if you're gonna take a hard right on, into the storage facility with a trailer if you're moving, that's gonna be harder than taking a nice leisurely left. So why don't they just come down to the end of the cul-de-sac and turn around, so that they can take a nicely left into the storage unit? So I think even if the, one of the entrances is on Birchwood Lane, I think we'll still have traffic all the way down to the end of Birchwood Lane for the turnaround in the cul-de-sac because of the way that's oriented. I wanted to know if there's gonna be any signage for the storage unit. Earlier this summer, we had a big sign at the end, before the traffic light went in, at the intersection where Route one-twenty-one comes in. There was a big sign from the DOT warning people who were coming down the hill fast that there was a new traffic pattern. And the way that sign was oriented made it so that we couldn't see when we wanted to take a left onto twenty-six if we were leaving in that direction. So I'm wondering if there will be signage that will be blocking our view in some way from exiting the street where we live on. It seems like it's, we've already addressed the water issue, that was another thing. And you've mentioned that there will be, some of these addresses, issues will be addressed by a third party at a future meeting. Is that something that we can also attend to hear the, how that turns out?
Yes. I think I got, I got it wrong at the last, the last time, so this is sketch plan.
Everybody that got notified today will get notified.
Will get notified for the next meeting.
Okay, it goes beyond that meeting, then we won't notify you again. So once they get into site plan review, if they have to go to further meetings, the notifications won't be sent out. You'll have to just keep checking our planning board site to see if they're on the agenda. Or anything, any further review.
Scott, can you clarify that? When we come in for site plan, they will be notified, correct?
Yes. But if you get pushed into a second meeting, then we would not notify you again.
Typically, in the past, a lot of businesses, as part of site plan, there was actually three meetings, so they get, a lot of people come in with the sketch plan just to get the draft. And then they say, is this feasible or not, or what do we need to do to address the issues of the board? And then you address those, and then either we conditionally approved it, or we say, well, we'll go another meeting. So the second meeting wouldn't be, nobody would get a postcard. So it's up to you all, at the first site plan meeting, you still will get a postcard if it goes to that level. After that, it's up to you and your due diligence to either reach out to the office, go on the webpage, and it shows the agenda.
Okay, it's posted on the webpage for the town.
Webpage, I'm sure they put it on Facebook and all sorts of stuff that I'm not part of, so.
Me neither.
Yeah.
But the town website, then code enforcement page is where we can.
It'll be on the planning board.
On the planning board. And it'll say next, it'll say, you know, meeting, agenda, and all sorts of stuff, so it'll be there.
Jim, if I could ask too, certainly they'll be notified for that meeting, and certainly I hope they attend and are informed at that meeting. The next meeting date is typically, you know, perhaps you go to the first meeting, they'll probably provide some comment and table to the next, at which will, anybody at that meeting will note the date, correct?
We would have to, we may not meet submission deadline, so.
Right, it's gonna be up to you to get, I mean, because, once again, it's not my way of doing things, but it's just the way it is right now, that you'll have Friday until noon. Put in your next packet to get on the next agenda.
Thursday.
It's a little tight.
Is it Thursday? I thought it was Friday at noon.
It used to be, it changed into eleven days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
A little tight.
I just don't want this to get lost, a follow-up, and then us not be able to kind of follow it through. If we go back to the part of the mother lot is part of the subdivision, the first line item for the restrictive covenant is that no building shall be erected on the premises except one single-family log home dwelling. So.
Correct, if you wanna go back, if you have a pen? Do you know how to use the inter-scouting registry deeds?
Yeah, yep.
Pretty easy to use. Go in and look at the plan book, Plan Book thirty-two, one thirteen. So that's that.
Yep.
That's the original.
Right.
Okay. If you read any of the deeds associated with any of those individual nine lots or whatever it shows there, it goes through A through I, or whatever it is.
Right.
And it specifies on that, goes through M. It specifies on that, just like you say the first thing, it says, da-da-da-da, "Single-family log home."
Right. Then you were referencing.
But it goes down to I, says, "By imposing these restrictions, the grantor does not commit herself to imposing similar restrictions in the deeds of other persons purchasing lots on this plan," meaning of the original, "or," on this plan, whether or not the same are located near the lot being conveyed. So if you bought Lot Four and Lot Five, she wanted to sell to Lot Five and wanted, said that you can put in a ranch-style home, they could've done that.
Okay.
But somehow, it seems like it was being marketed as a log home.
Yeah, it seems like, it seems fishy.
Yeah, it's absolutely fishy, yeah.
Because all of our.
Look, don't shoot the messenger here, I actually did the research for you.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I did the research, and it, to me, it just seems totally asinine. If you wanna protect property values, you make the covenants run, and the restrictions run through the whole subdivision. But this person, you know, I'll give you, I'll give you a quick example, because I know we're getting late here. Down on Brown Road, there were a bunch of houses put down there, it's a cluster subdivision. It was a fifty-five-plus community. You know what happened to that? Not enough houses sold. The developer came back in, said, "I want to just open this up to everybody." Now that, now the two people that bought in there originally, did they have an issue with that? They could've come to the meetings, they could've discussed everything and so forth. But eventually, it got converted into, anybody could buy and live there, it wasn't a fifty-five-plus community. So unfortunately, oh God, I hate saying this. George is gonna hate it. I bought enough property, I've dealt with enough restrictions, I've dealt with whatever. It's important to deal with title attorneys, because they bring this stuff up. Because the first thing a title attorney should have mentioned to any of you all is, these restrictions don't run with the rest of the land. To you and I, it seems stupid.
Yeah, totally.
But we can't change, somebody had it in their mind that if, if something didn't sell in here, and I'm getting older and I just need to generate more revenue going forward for my retirement, but for whatever reason, she, or they dealt with that as, you know, up until this point. And the remaining land is still part of the subdivision, but to me, it's even saying on that, it's part of that original plat, which had the rest of the land not part of that restrictive covenants, but it's still part of the subdivision. So, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so the last thing I'd like to say is that we live in a neighborhood, and we wanna protect the integrity of our neighborhood. And Stacy, you may be a very nice person, and we would love to have you as our neighbor, but we don't want your business in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Can I speak again?
Not you.
We can go until night, or I'll try to reach out off at night. I just feel like, you know, people are taking notes and gonna problem-solve the speed limit, and problem-solve the lighting, and problem-solve the water drainage, and problem-solve this. It doesn't problem-solve the eleven kids that live on that road. There's nothing that's gonna problem-solve that. And there's eleven now, there's grandkids gonna be there, there's gonna be more kids there, and I don't know how to express myself without getting like super emotional, that it's not about the drainage for me, it's not about the lighting for me, it is about the safety of my daughters, of my neighbors' kids, of the grandkids, with, I, with total complete strangers coming on our road at any time that they want. And it makes me super, like, it could be somebody from out of state who has a storage unit, I don't, I don't know. And I, I don't want people to problem-solve away these concrete details and forget about my daughter Thea and my daughter Nora. I don't want them forgotten in this, at all, and I'm not moving. So my grandkids are gonna be here too, so I, I don't, I'm like pleading with you guys that this is not the right spot for that storage unit, it's just not.
It's not a matter that we're trying to problem-solve each individual issue so somebody can develop something.
No, not you.
We, we, we can't say no to something that's an allowed use.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking like.
No, 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 I know, I understand that, and I know you're emotional, because it's the same thing. I grew up in a certain neighborhood that I hate to see change and whatever, but, I mean, things do change unfortunately. But there are enough issues here, I think, that need to get addressed, that it's not just, we're gonna go through, or the third party's gonna say, "This is an issue, fix it." "This is an issue, fix it." "This is an issue, fix it." It might come to something that's just hits the point that there are too domino, too many dominos falling, it just doesn't make sense for this to go where it's being proposed to go. So, I mean, we can't just blanketly say, because of the school bus issue or the stormwater issue, we're gonna deny this outright, because we can't do that. We have to go through this logical process, wait for a third-party review, which deals with expertise that we don't have. And we do take into account what you all have been saying about this, you know? And it, it, it's not going on death ears, I can just say that too.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes?
I just have some other clarifying questions. My name's Jason. Is this rural residential zone?
It's Village Four.
It's Village Four?
It's Village Four.
Okay.
So in that, as much as I dislike it, like Village Four, which is up that way, and the downtown village, which is the stuff down where we're at now, there are also design standards that have to be met of what these buildings have to look like as well. They can't, I can tell you, they can't look in the exact shape that they are right now, size-wise, because every seventy-five feet, you can't just have a hundred-and-forty-foot building with straight siding. It's gotta have jigs and jogs, it can't be the same material from top to bottom, so usually you have a stone base with, I don't know, you know, hardy plank on top, hoopla. I mean, there are all these design standards that the buildings have to meet too, that it's just not a cookie cutter, here's a, here's a family doll that goes in, they're all just cookie cutter, this shape, this color, this, whatever. So there are design standards that have to be met as well.
If I were to look in the, what do you call it, the comprehensive land use.
Yeah, that's book.
Yeah. Yep. What would this particular building be considered under accepted use?
Business primary.
Business primary, I'm gonna assume.
Okay, and that's Village Four?
Yep. Well, business primary is basically allowed in almost all of those zones.
No.
Well, not.
Village Four downtown, and maybe one of the other villages.
Well, GP, right?
Oh, general purpose, yeah.
It seems to me that.
Oh, yeah, rural residential, is that what I'm trying?
From the maps I've seen on some of the documents from the town office, and it is online, it seems like Birchwood is in a rural residential zone?
I think parts of it are, the front part is in that Village Four.
The front part of Birchwood?
The part off twenty-six is in Village Four.
Maybe just the graphic that I'm seeing on the website isn't detailed enough.
Zach's gonna pull it up here in a second.
So half of Birchwood is rural residential, and half is Village One?
Other side, layers, left inside. Darker areas are Village Four. The other are Village One or Two, and the rest of the pinkish areas. So that lot and the lot across the street from Birchwood are both in Village Four.
Do you have any idea when that was changed?
I have no idea. It's been in place at least since two thousand and one.
I've lived there long enough, so that whole, that whole stretch all the way up over Shaker Hill, at one time, Sonny Chipman planted corn in that, in that field. It was all field, it was by the cars. But it changed in the cold, fifty years.
Yeah, it's changed over time, and I don't remember if it was that early, but I remember back when we had a third-party consultant.
Two thousand and one.
With community economic development, that got changed as part of that.
Really during, during the seventies, early eighties and nineties, one of the things in the code was established. And then it evolved over time, it reached the need.
I'm sorry, did that answer your question? One wants to go on twice?
Actually, I have just one other thing to say, is, I'm beating a dead horse here, everybody else has said it, but I just, I hope the planning board recognizes the type of community and neighborhood that we have. And I think we've heard it a couple times of how this business would impact the integrity of that neighborhood and that area, right in that spot. I think, you know, there are other places in town where it would fit in nicely. And, again, I think we all welcome you as a neighbor to join that community. However, it just feels like a very impersonal business. A lot of impersonal traffic, and something that's really gonna affect the integrity of this whole area. Not only Birchwood, but our neighbors on twenty-six.
Anybody else?
I guess I have one question.
Certainly. Could you just say your name, please?
Kayla.
Okay.
I live in Oak Ridge.
Yep.
So I was just, there were mentioned earlier a little bit of like future plans for the Oak Ridge side. I was just wondering if that was something that's, like, I know you had mentioned that you were hoping to move to Maine. Like, were you hoping to put a house on that side?
It would not be business.
Right, would it be like a residential?
It, I don't have an answer for you on that. I mean, it, yes, if, whether we were able to amend the subdivision and put a single-family home back there, or sell it for somebody to put a single-family home, that's determinant of the subdivision issues. But that would not be, that back half would never be business.
Okay, I was just wondering, is there an idea for back there?
So on Kayla's thing, I have to ask again, the little cut that goes through, would that ever be used? Because that borders our property.
The only, the only time would be access, with what James was saying about, about access.
About what enough to put access to, I don't believe.
I don't, I don't have an answer for you there.
So, yeah, at which point, that anything would be developed back there, it would have to come back to the board, and the public would be notified, and certainly be known. I know in our first initial conversations, anything could be developed, the plan would've been residential back there in the back section. It will certainly be, you know, there's no plans in place for that right now, so I've been trying to tackle this front half, and figure out what's the game plan for that front half. But we're, we're just at the back right now. Appreciate you sharing, I certainly appreciate everybody's concerns and hearing them and understanding.
Would you guys ever buy a house next to a storage unit? Like, if you were looking?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this, this isn't supposed to be an argument, so. If you wanna ask a question, just ask it, so the app can get here, so it doesn't get.
Yeah, got it.
Kind of, please.
I'm just wondering, even anybody on the board, if anybody, if they were house-hunting and looking for their ideal house, would they ever choose to move next to a storage unit?
I can ask you the same question, since.
No, 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 let me finish, let me finish, please.
The first agenda item tonight dealt with something at the house where I live, but I do not own the property. I've been with my girlfriend for forever. So one of our neighbors had asked about a solar farm, because her son bought the property next to ours. Would you buy a house next to a solar farm if you knew a solar farm was going in the back? It's the same question, it's still a development purpose.
I don't think it's the same thing. A storage unit, there's gonna be random people in your house, those are solar.
What I'm talking about is devaluing property around you, and I would assume that there would be a detrimental effect on that, but, I mean, you could talk to the realtor here, you could talk to the realtor back there, amongst yourselves and so forth. I don't know the answer to that. Would I like, I mean, I guess that's why we own a hundred acres of land, so we can protect ourselves from people. I'm sorry, it's not the case with what you have going on there, but I don't think anybody would, would like to see commercial development around residential areas. And there are. anybody would, would like to see commercial development around residential areas. And there are specific things in this codebook too, that if you wanna read in that, of what the visual screening and a bunch of other things, the separations have to be between a commercial use and a residential use within these Village, Village Four, 'cause it happened at the gun club and a bunch of other things. So there are certain standards that they have to meet as well, which aren't really even being addressed currently, because this isn't a formal plan, they're just here to get feedback.
Is this a case where zoning can be changed, you know, through town process, that because of the abutting in a bus, the, the other residential area?
It's not gonna stop. I don't know about.
If that would still have to go through a town meeting-type thing, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Definitely has to go through town.
Have to vote on it.
There would have to be vote, yeah.
Whether or not you can bifurcate that, that district, because you're bifurcating the stuff south to north up to five, uh, up to one-twenty-one, so you're basically creating a weird split there by bringing it all the way up to the road.
It's not spottoning because of the other going, this thing that, yeah, anyway.
So I guess.
I would like to say, certainly, we've certainly heard the, the concerns of the abutters, and I, I know the applicant doesn't take it lightly, and will certainly work to be as best a neighbor as they can, given that they certainly do have a, a plan to do, to develop the front portion there of the lot in, in the Village Four residential, or, sorry, the Village Four district there. Um, and anything we bring forward, we'll try and bring forward is complete application to address items such as traffic, drainage, um, any safety and lighting, and that's some of the concerns we've heard here today.
Anybody else before we fill out a little bit of paperwork?
I just wanna ask one question real quickly. Did you look into the need for this type of business?
Yes.
How much demand is there for that? Because I looked at the one that is on twenty-six, and there's a lot of openings right now.
We did it based on a factor of population versus available storage, and it is a high-need area for both storage and self-storage.
Based on math?
Based on area review of population versus need of storage, yes.
Okay, 'cause it's interesting to know that there's a lot of available storage in that other unit.
Yeah, we got a big one up here.
Okay, just, most people in Poland have homes, and that's not something they need. And when you're looking at Auburn, you would assume that there's a lot of apartment building, the population is higher, so there's a higher need for storage. I think we're probably, though our population might be high, the need for storage is probably not very high.
I just have one other question, 'cause I'm not familiar with this process. So we have all given our feedback, and then is there, is this a for-sure thing that is happening, that we cannot, okay, how, what, does somebody have to, do you guys vote on whether or not it gets approved, or what is the process?
The process is, the applicant will come back with more answers, more detailed things of questions we ask on where you're gonna put the snow, give us a full lighting cutoff, let's see where the stormwater goes, let's see this, that, let's get reports back from DOT with the accent on twenty-six between this place and that place. All this other information's gonna come back to us. You will be informed of that meeting, that's gonna be the first site plan meeting, and you will get a postcard for that. You're all welcome to come back to that. Um, and usually in our packet, depending when it gets dropped off to the code office, just like in this one with the solar thing, there was a third-party review from this office, this engineering firm, that addressed a bunch of things. It didn't address everything, so that application will come back again. These neighbors won't be notified again, because it's already in site plan. You will be notified, because the first meeting's gonna be a site plan. Hopefully, we'll have the third-party review back on that, which will address much, not, not all, but a majority of the issues that you all are bringing up, and if there are solutions to it, and so forth. And then we go through, and we follow the codebook, and if we require more information, we table it, go on to the next meeting, they provide more information, and then once everything's provided, we'll go through a bigger checklist than this, go down through everything, and we'll vote one way or the other.
So you, the planning board, votes to approve or deny the site plan?
Correct. Okay. We can't deny it, though, if they pass on the laws.
Well, based, based on the code, we.
Based on the. So if they meet all requirements, we cannot vote against them.
Two things I wanna point out. One is the DOT, whether they're gonna allow a curb cut there.
It's already.
Jim, there, there's a curb.
It's, 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 it's existed for free. It's, it's there.
Let me, let me point out another thing. You guys got a lot, lost a lot of your say when the town took that road over. If they kept the association, then you'd have some ground. But now that it's a public road, it's gonna be a tough, tough say. I know, I've lived here all my life, I know things work.
Is, is there a process for changing it back?
Yeah, it'd have to go through a, we have no more town meetings, so it'd have to be voted on by the voters. I don't know, it'd be a tough thing, I tell you. It would probably have to be done by petition, I would say. You'd have to talk to them in the town office.
Yeah, we started petition.
We have our petition, petition's starting right now.
So, Jim, you're telling me that we had an association in place for Birchwood Estates?
Yeah, originally it was.
And it was in the registry of deeds? Where, where is this association? I can't track any information.
Well, my association.
Jim, you, you can't give out information that you. It's false.
No, but I'm saying, there was, there was an association there, talking to prior owners up in there. It was an association, the town never owned that road.
Well, whatever.
It's gotta be in the deed somewhere.
Well.
I was the first one to move in there. It was a private road at the time.
That's right.
And the who was paid to have it paved through pipe. And once it was paved, everybody, I don't know, the planning board, the selectmen, or somebody came in, inspected the whole thing. The only issue was the cul-de-sac, they wanted it a little bit bigger, but the, the town accepted the road. But prior to that, it was a private road.
We have to figure out what year that.
Yeah, I can tell you what year, nineteen eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, okay. Thank you.
I didn't see a name of the development on this. You don't have a name of development on this yet, do you?
Uh, no, I'm a specific development, for the proposed surge of development.
Yeah, I'm just going through the checklist, and that's not part of that, so it's not waived, it's not on file, it's not, not applicable, 'cause it will be at some point, so that will need to be, you know, addressed on this stuff.
Also write a formal name for the development.
Yeah. Um, alright, so I've got the checklist, other than the name of the development was not provided on this, which we'll probably go for, so can I have a motion to accept the checklist as complete?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the site plan review checklist for Stacy German, Birchwood Lane, map one, lot twelve A, is complete.
Second.
Discussion, all is in favor. So I'm not gonna go down through this other stuff, because it's not the formal site.
Great.
So special requirements for that, so that's that. Alright, so, once again, the process is, they have until Thursday this week to address all these issues, to get on for our next meeting, which is fourteen days from today, so it'll be, like, twenty-fourth, which they probably will not meet that deadline, so I would look to.
Well, it's gonna be a twenty-eight day review, too.
Oh, it's twenty-eight day review too, so tense. So probably.
One, two, three, four, the end of July sometime. If I, if I could even provide some insight to that too, we're, we're gonna be doing some DOT coordination and providing a formal survey of the site to, like, geographic and boundary, et cetera, that will hopefully answer some of these questions. We're likely, yeah, a little further than that, especially with the DEP review that'll take place. That's a, it's a lengthy review process. Um, so I, I mean, sure, we can say we might be back then, but it might be a little later, before we're really back in front of the board.
Right, I'm just trying to get people in the audience your idea. But once again, that's gonna be their first site plan meeting, so you will get a postcard, so don't be worried about that part of it. I know the mail sometimes doesn't get out, but it's fourteen of you down there, so if you all don't get something, it's gonna be.
Somebody will know.
Somebody's gonna have to pay on that, so. Alright, well, thanks for coming in and expressing your concerns.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright, so I guess we'll just finish our small stuff. I'll be honest, I don't wanna hold on to that, 'cause that, so it'll be a start, so I'll just talk about that going forward, so it just is something that will come in for us.
Sure.
Hi, can I give this to you? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Zach. Zach, good? Alright, so we got findings, uh? So George, any other? Oh, no. Alright, for the first one, we've got findings of fact for the minor subdivision application to Mayor, map fifteen, lot eight A. We got issues.
Petition.
Oh, the petition?
Jim, you want to make a motion?
Just the one I'm on.
Oh, you can't, George, just, just the one that's.
Yeah, I was, I was on that one, right?
Which one is it? I can make a motion.
Uh, the first one.
What?
Make a motion to accept the findings of fact for the minor subdivision application, Ronda and Gregory Mayor, Zero Bakers Town Road, map fifteen, lot eight A.
Second.
Discussion, all is in favor. I can't do the next. So the next one is a former rural and zoning application for Stokum, ten Spruce Drive, map thirty-six, lot sixteen.
I can make a motion to that one?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the former rural and zoning application, finding of fact in conclusive law for Elizabeth Katie, Stokum, ten Spruce Drive, map thirty-six, lot sixteen.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all is in favor? Alright. Let's go back to scars.
Do we need to keep any of that?
Do we? Yeah, well, this one got tabled, and this one's.
And one, maybe I can keep it, right?
Alright, anything from the board on this slate?
Are we voting on, uh, new president and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Um, first, first in July.
Could I just leave my name on that?
How's it going?
No, thank you.
Good?
I'm good.
Good, George?
Well said.
Gerald?
Uh, I'll say.
Alright, uh. Can I take a, take a motion to adjourn, please?
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Everybody's happy, all is in favor?
Thank you. Yeah, by them, this time, yeah.